Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, August 21st, 2019. Could we have a roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Garrity.
Present.
Nortoff.
Here.
Pfaff.
Here.
Paytak. Riley. And Tu.
Present. We do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held on July 17th. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or changes? If not, a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
Is that Mr. Nortoff?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Pfaff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Clara.
Yep.
Okay.
So, the first item is on car wash use standards. In the current zoning ordinance, car washes have two distinct use standards. One-
Can I interrupt for just a second?
Yep.
It's a public hearing, I didn't ask anybody to warn them because there's nobody here. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it was on the record.
The first use standard is that car wash facilities must be screened along interior side and rear lot lines with a solid wall or fence, a minimum of six feet in height. One shrub, a minimum of three feet in height, must be planted linearly every three feet on center along such fence or wall. And the second is, the site must be designed to drain away from adjoining properties. Staff is proposing to change both use standards as they are redundant. Along with these car wash standards, car washes must also meet the drive-through facility and drive-up automated teller machine dash freestanding standards in the zoning ordinance, which state that additional screening may be required as part of special use approval to minimize the impact of exterior sightlight, uh, sight lighting, headlight glare, menu boards, and intercom sound. As car washes are only allowed as a special use, the first car wash standard is unneeded. Also, past input from the Planning and Zoning Board suggested that requiring the fence and linearly planted shrub screening for every car wash would be unnecessary.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Comments? Do we need a motion, each one?
Um, do we need a motion each one, David?
Let's go ahead and do each one.
Okay.
I'll do the motion. Motion to, uh, forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the car wash use standards. Text amendment as proposed by staff.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nortoff. Any discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Nortoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
And Tu.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next one is the residential driveway.
Yep. The old zoning ordinance did not restrict driveway width. The current zoning ordinance restricts driveway width as follows. A residential driveway that provides access to a detached garage or carport is limited to a maximum width of 12 feet. A driveway apron, the width of the garage or carport plus an additional 18 inches on both sides of the garage walls, is permitted to extend for a distance depth of 20 feet back from the garage doors or carport entrance before tapering back to the maximum driveway width to allow access to the additional spaces. Such taper must not exceed a 45-degree angle. A residential driveway that provides access to an attached garage shall be no wider than the width of the garage plus an additional 18 inches on both sides of the garage walls or 24 feet, whichever is less. Where the attached garage is wider than 24 feet, a driveway apron, the width of the garage plus an additional 18 inches on both sides of the garage walls, is permitted to extend for a distance depth of 20 feet back from the garage doors before tapering back to the maximum driveway width to allow access to the additional spaces. Such taper must not exceed a 45-degree angle. In 2018, a text amendment allowing U-shaped driveways was also added. Residents with detached garages that are looking to remove and replace their existing driveways have complained that the 12-foot width is too restrictive. Staff researched other nearby communities and found that most communities either do not provide a maximum driveway width, or they do not differentiate between widths for driveways associated with detached or attached garages. This includes Gray's Lake, Libertyville, Mundeline, Antioch, Waukegan, and Bannockburn. Of the communities that do differentiate, the 12-foot detached garage driveway width is common, and that's in Tinley Park and Park Ridge. Staff is suggesting the following text amendment in order to allow wider driveways for detached garage, uh, garages, and keep the width within reason. A residential driveway that provides access to a detached garage or carport is limited to a maximum width as follows. A, one-car garage, 14 feet. B, two-car garage, 16 feet. C, three-or-more-car garage, 18 feet. For the purpose of this provision, nine feet of garage width is required per garage space. A driveway apron, the width of the garage or carport plus an additional 18 inches on both sides of the garage walls, is permitted to extend for a distance depth of 20 feet back from the garage door, uh, or carport entrance before tapering back to the maximum driveway width to allow access to the additional spaces. Such taper must not exceed a 45-degree angle.
I guess I have one question. For an attached garage, a typical garage door is eight feet wide, correct?
Or, say that again, please.
For an attached-
For a one-car garage is an eight, is an eight-foot door, correct?
Eight or nine, yeah.
Okay, so if it's an attached garage for a one-car, the most we would allow, assuming we're going with the nine, would be 12 feet. Why are we asking for 14 for a detached?
So, the idea with that is, if it's a one-car garage, that's, it's up to a maximum amount, so if it is a one-car garage, that is nine feet. The most it could be is 12 feet. It's still the... Wait a second, let me double check.
Right. It'd still be limited to the wall, that front wall of the garage as the maximum width, plus 18 inches on each side?
Oh, it's, it's not the door, it's the width of the garage?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Okay. I was thinking of the door.
So I, I pulled up the drawing as it is in the zoning ordinance right now. So basically what we'd be looking at doing is changing this whole max out here from 12 foot for a single car, or 14 for a-
14 for a single-
16 for a double, and 18 for a multi-car garage. All the dimensions out here adjacent to the garage are basically the same.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, on an attached garage, is it the same 20 feet out where you have to taper back to 12 feet?
If it is above 24 feet in width, then yes. If the driveway, uh, if the driveway, uh, sorry, if the attached garage, the width of that is greater than 24 feet, then you have to taper back starting 20 feet from the face of the garage.
Okay, um, that makes sense then, because my driveway would be non-compliant if, if it wasn't. My question is then, why is it different for a detached garage? I mean, part of the issue is like if, if my driveway had to taper back after 20 feet, I wouldn't even have room for more than just two cars in the driveway. And then further back, I'd, I could only put one, and couldn't get around it.
So, we started regulating driveway widths with the zoning ordinance update, and part of the reason why the detached garages, uh, are limited, the driveway width, is because some houses have attached garages and detached garages, and the point was to not have two very large driveways, very wide driveways on the same lot. That's my understanding of it.
You also have the circumstances where the detached garage may be part of a vacuum lot or, you know, a back corner, and so you have a big mass of asphalt right into the entire site. So it's trying to, trying to determine that.
Yeah, I thought about that, but I would think there could be a differentiation between having two car, or two garages and one garage. But the thing I see is that limitation of 20 feet limits them to only having two cars, where many people can have four cars. My driveway in Pembroke, I could've fit six cars and, and, um, you know, it was, it was pretty long. I mean, it curved, that was one of the reasons. So it seems kind of limiting on that 20 feet, because that's really basically just one car length, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's just the area right in front of the garage.
In front of the garage, 20 feet out.
Twenty feet, and then it would taper back to whatever, well, in this case, right now it's 12 feet, but we're proposing to widen that.
And on a, um, on a two-car garage, it goes to, uh, where, where did it go?
16 feet, yeah.
Can you-
What you have at your house now?
Right. Well, it's 17, it's 17 feet, four inches right now. And it's only the width of the, I measured it. It's only the width of the garage, which I was unaware the first time, so-
A two-car garage door is a 16-foot wide door.
Right. Right, but, uh, the pavement part is, is 17 feet, four inches, so, I don't know, is that wider than it's supposed to be then?
No, no, you're allowing it up to, to that whole wall of the garage, so you get the little sides of the garage as well, you can pave to the outside end of those, plus 18 inches.
Okay.
So what you're saying, David, is that most two-car garages right now are 16 feet, and then it tapers to 12, do you know the driveway?
No, well, only if it's detached. If it's attached to your home, you can carry that 16, 18 feet, 20 feet all the way up the street. It's only in the case that you would have a three-car garage with an attached garage that you would have to 40 dollars to taper.
Back down to 24 feet.
Back down to 24 feet. We're suggesting on the detached garage, which right now is limited, it has to taper down to 12 feet, no matter whether you have a single car, double car, triple car, quadruple car garage, no matter what you found, on a detached garage, it has to taper down to 12 feet before it gets to the street. So we're proposing to relax that a little bit, give them, give the residents a little more flexibility, the bigger the garage, the more likely it would be more cars, so, you know, we'll need with a single car garage, two-car detached garage, typically those are, you know, hobby cars, RVs, toys, parking pad. You know, once you get into a double car garage, I'm assuming there are probably actually cars in there, but a double car garage, you'd have room for basically two cars side by side in the driveway. It'd be tight, but it would be able to do that.
On the 16 feet?
On 16, so the-
Yeah, right.
David, I have a question. Is there a different rule for side-load garage doors? And, and the reason I'm asking is, recently on Sunnyside, um, somebody redid their driveway just on, just to the north of Tanglewood, and it looks like just a sea of concrete.
We, you know, they have the same 20-foot measurement off the back, um, where, I don't think we've got a drawing showing the side-load.
No, we don't.
They're, they're a little bit trickier for us to administer those. We give them the same 20 feet straight out, and then we also will allow a parking pad. You recall, we have 400 square feet of parking pad that's allowed by my, as part of your driveway, 200 square feet, which should be in front of the house, 200 square feet, a total of 40 square feet. So a lot of those will give some of that allocation of parking pad if they need some more maneuvering room for side-load garage.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments or concerns?
Have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
So, I mean, how many people complain that the 12-foot width is too restrictive?
It's a pretty common complaint with detached garages, especially when, uh, people come in to remove and replace their existing detached garage driveways, and we tell them they have to limit them after the 20 feet.
I mean, my concern is, most detached garages are not, you know, immediately adjacent to the house. They're like set way back in the lot. So you're just gonna end up with a sea of asphalt, or a sea of concrete, or something. And realistically, I mean, how many cars do people need to store in their, you know, on their driveway? I mean, are they, you're not having a parking lot, or-
There, there are some that, you know, we hear complaints, you know, they've got five cars in the driveway, three in the garage, and it's not enough room, you know, it's, depends on how many kids you have and how many toys you have, and whether you can park a single car in your garage, no. So it's-
That's, this is the tail wagging the dog, is what it is.
Yeah. Claire's right, we do get a lot of complaints on the driveways. Most of the applications come in, they're looking for something more than the 12 feet. We've gotta trim 'em down, they're not happy about it, uh, but we, you know, we're as generous as we can be within the ordinance, giving them allocations for the parking pads, but sometimes it's just a little more restrictive than what they like. So it's ultimately up to this organization to make the recommendation, but we're, you know, while we were taking some text amendments to the board, we thought this was one that we've seen enough, um, consternation by the public that we thought we would run it past you.
And from a practical point of view, we're, we're dealing with larger-than-typical lots to accommodate this thing, right? Because a typical R2, R3, single-family home isn't going to be able to have a detached garage on it.
Most of the structures that we're looking at are on the east side of town, the older portions of town, those that were developed within PUDs in the late 80s, early 90s usually have the attached garages, and there's really not enough room for a detached garage in addition. You are correct.
Yeah, so, so we're mostly talking like R1s, right?
R1s, or some of the older homes on the east side of town that have a little bit larger lots, or wider lots than, than the zoning ordinance would require.
But there are, there are plenty of R2 and R3 as well.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, yes.
I can see an issue here. I mean, is there any, you could not park any, in that driveway right there, in the driveway, without blocking somebody, you can only park two cars. Well, if that, I don't think you could actually swing out of there very easy, uh, with the car parked in the driveway on the left, and if you were on the right, trying to back out of there would be pretty much impossible. It seems very restrictive to me, but I get it, and you don't want too much pavement down, but couldn't there be some relation to how far the garage was set back? I mean, if this was just sitting beside the house like a, a normal attached garage, the guy's kind of losing just because it's detached, right? I mean, you're losing a lot. I'd be frustrated by it if it was me. I've, I've had to park three cars in my driveway, and when we did that, we had to park one on the apron. And it's, it's rough. I mean, there's a lot of people with more than, you know, three, four cars in their family, if you have two kids, or you have a guest over, and we can't park on the street here, so, um, well, you can if you call the-
Yes, you can.
If you call the police department and let them know.
On a temporary basis.
On a temporary basis.
Yeah.
I-
Yeah, so. It's me again.
If, if you notice, when Clara read the initial regulation, it's a fairly complex and confusing regulation already.
Yeah.
I'd be a little bit wary of adding another level of complexity to it by, you know, having a sliding scale based on how far back off the street it was. We can do it, but it's just another level of complexity that we would have to then explain to the residents and try to make them understand.
Yeah, I get it. I think 16 feet would work for me. I, I don't get the 12 feet, it's just way too narrow. 16 feet, you could get by, it'd be a little bit, uh, risky to have your teenager try and back a car out of there, but doable.
So, as it stands right now, we've got 12 feet. We're proposing 14, 16, 18. So your recommendation, or your thought is to have the minimum be 16?
Uh, would be my thought.
16, and then 18 for a three-car or larger?
Yeah, that would-
Or just 16 throughout?
That would be my thought, but I, the 14 really doesn't do anything extra for him, I guess.
14 for, is for the single car garage?
That's just for a one-car garage, though.
Yeah, but you may have, you may have several cars, teenager and different people.
Yeah, and the reason why for that one, that it's, the suggestion was 14 is because it could take into account like one-and-a-half car garages as well, if that's-
Oh, right, because there is difference with garages.
And you wouldn't give them the two, that's why we have the nine-foot constitutes one parking space. So in order to be considered a two-car garage, it would need to be at least 18 feet in width, the garage itself.
They'd still have the option to put a parking pad, which would give them some more width, right?
They would. The parking pad, uh, as David said, is limited to 400 square feet.
Right.
So that, uh, typically is about two parking spaces.
Right.
Uh, and only 200 square feet of that can be in front of the house.
Right. I think, I think as they originally proposed it, it's pretty generous, to be honest.
Yeah. I guess it's okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Someone willing to advance a motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the village board on the detached garage driveway width. Text amendment as proposed by staff.
Okay, we have a second, a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nortoff. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bow.
No.
Garrity.
Aye.
Nortoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Tu.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next one is the residential sidewalk width.
Yes. The old zoning ordinance did not provide a maximum sidewalk width. The current zoning ordinance limits residential, single-family and two-family sidewalks to four feet in width. This requirement was put in to differentiate sidewalks, which are allowed anywhere, from patios, which are restrict, which, uh, have restricted encroachments into all setbacks, due to situations where residents had placed sidewalks and setbacks that were really being used more as patios. No other nearby communities appear to restrict residential sidewalk widths. Increasing the allowed sidewalk width to six feet would accommodate larger sidewalks without encouraging use as a patio, and setback areas where patios would not otherwise be allowed.
Okay, um, I'll start out with the question. I mean, four feet is a pretty wide sidewalk as it is, well, what's, what's driving the six-foot proposal?
So typically, it's in front setbacks, so, uh, sidewalks can be located in any setback. There's a lot of houses with, uh, the, where the house comes up to the front setback and is very close to that front setback, so any sidewalk or decorative, um, kind of sidewalk leading up to the house and to the stoop, uh, they've asked for much wider sidewalks, and that's a pretty typical one. It's not as much the ones on the sides of the house or the back, but, um, I've had personally quite a few, uh, residents who have, uh, difficulty getting around, or if they use a wheelchair, that have requested that in particular.
If you could imagine a, you know, a house with a, you know, a porch all the way across the front, and a wide front step, you know, there are some of them that are eight, 10 feet wide, they come down, and then to restrict them down to a four-foot sidewalk up on that eight-foot wide, 10-foot wide step, you know, it, it allows them some flexibility to transition it back to the driveway, transition it out to the public sidewalk. Um, it, it's just one that we've seen that's been, in practice, has been a little bit more restrictive and limits the, the artistic flexibility of the homeowner to do a brick paver or concrete sidewalk.
Is this the sidewalk on their own property?
Right, so this sounds like a pub, a private sidewalk, not a public sidewalk.
Yes, it's very mu, yes, a private sidewalk.
Oh.
It's the service walk going from the front steps to the driveway, from the garage door, the side garage door, to the backyard, you know, those are the sidewalk we're talking about.
Yes, specifically the single-family and two-family residential sidewalks, so private sidewalks.
Go ahead, Brian.
You literally have a- What happens though when, you know, you get some, and I know this will happen, some homeowner decides, oh, I'm gonna, you know, increase the width of the public sidewalk that's in front of my house by two feet by putting pavers into my front lawn?
I mean, the, the public sidewalks are located on public right-of-way, so those, you know, those are restricted, you know, we build those, we maintain those, and any work or addition or modification to those would require a special permit from the village for work in the right-of-way. We would, you know, typically not allow someone to enlarge the, the sidewalk in the public right-of-way.
How are you gonna stop that? I mean, right now, I could go out, I've got, the public sidewalk stops right at my front lot line, I could go in there and say, I'm gonna put two feet of concrete right in the front of my house here, because I want the sidewalk to be six feet.
The public sidewalk that runs along the street?
So there'd be four feet in the public right-of-way and two feet on my property.
Well, typically, yeah, right now, someone could go and put a four-foot sidewalk right at their property line. We allow sidewalks anywhere on a lot up to four feet currently.
So a sidewalk doesn't have to, I mean, my thought would be, a sidewalk has to be connecting one area to another area, like a front door to a driveway, or a driveway to get around to, to a patio along the side of your house.
And that's typically what we see.
But, why, and, and what planet would anybody allow a sidewalk that is just immediately adjacent to the existing public sidewalk? It doesn't go anywhere.
We wouldn't. There, there are times when they want to tie their front stoop sidewalk out to the public sidewalk, so I've seen that before.
Right. Perpendicular, but not parallel.
Perpendicular, but we've not seen anything parallel.
Okay.
And typically, the, the public sidewalk is set one foot inside the right-of-way line, so we actually own a foot of green space on the back edge of the sidewalk for-
So technically, you wouldn't be able to do it anyway, so.
Right.
Okay. I, I guess, I, I'm totally comfortable with the one example that you cited, Dave, where somebody's got a great big wide front porch, and to have just four feet go up to a, you know, a grander entrance, if you will, might be kind of harsh, and I can see the need to have it wider for a while and taper down to a, a reasonable width, once it gets to, to whatever it's connecting to. My concern is, if we're talking about a sidewalk that goes from someone's driveway around the side of their house so that you can get to their patio, and we're talking, you know, a typical side yard setback of maybe 10 feet, to have the ability to go as much as six foot and virtually, you know, take 60% of that area seems a little much to me.
And honestly, we haven't seen those applications come in. It's typically the ones off the front porch, you know, the, and as interesting as it may be, the, the current trend is to put a small little table and two little chairs out front, it's kind of a sidewalk. You know, I've, I've seen those all over town. That's typically what we're seeing, the request for off the front sidewalk, more of a decorative seating area, a little cafe table out on, along the front sidewalk. We've not seen any applications come in for a wider-than-normal sidewalk, trying to get access to the rear yard. Not that they wouldn't be able to do it with this, but the, typically the cost of doing that where nobody can see it, and, you know, it doesn't really give you a whole lot more, you know, three feet is typically wide enough to, to walk and push a wheelbarrow or, you know, landscape cart or something like that around to the backyard. That's what I always use my sidewalk for.
Can I suggest that maybe staff take a, take a harder look at this one and, and address issues that we've experienced, rather than create a potential issue with, like, service walks that are going down the side of a house?
And I've got, the, the regulation for this is in section 10.3, I believe, of the zoning ordinance, so you can see the sidewalks. If it was something like that, if your concern is more for the sides and the rear yards, we may be able to bifurcate this and allow six feet in the front yard setback.
Setback, which is this?
Why here, and do, leave it for the four feet in the interior, rear, and corner side?
And I would suggest corner side, just because some houses, especially on corners, don't always face towards the front yard, so.
So if we would leave it at six foot for the front and corner side, and leave it at four for the rear and the interior sides, would that be palatable?
Any other input?
Dave, I'm in agreement with your position on Jim, so I'd be a little more inclined to, to go with that rather than as presented.
Okay.
I concur.
Okay. And then based on what you just said, I don't think we need to send it back. I think we can just amend the-
I think we can just amend the, the motion to incorporate the, the differentiation. Okay. Tim or Ed, would any, any other comment?
Would you just have two, two different rows then there for that?
What we would probably do is after this Y, you know, we take it, the four feet here and here we'll put a parenthesis six feet. Here we'll put a parenthesis six feet and over here we'll put a parenthesis four feet or something. We'll, we'll designate it in the zoning ordinance somehow so that it's
Got it.
clear as to what the, the encroachment would be, or what the width would be allowed.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Makes sense to me, I mean, if the requests that have come in are for the front porch really, and I've seen that done recently. Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Okay, is any, any other discussion? Is someone willing to advance a motion? Go ahead, Dave.
I move we forward a favorable recommendation for the residential sidewalk width amendment as presented tonight with the following amendment that it does add some additional restrictions to the side and rear yard. Continuing to limit to four feet, allowing for the six foot for front yard and corner side.
A second, second, Mr., any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Nortoff.
Aye.
Taff.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, semi-open fence opacity.
Yes. Per code, three-foot tall solid fences or four-foot tall semi-open fences are allowed in the front and corner side setbacks. In order to be considered semi-open, a fence must have, over its entirety, more than 50% of the superficial surface consisting of regularly distributed openings. For example, if the picket is three inches in width, then a three-inch space is required. Nearby communities have addressed fences in front and corner side setbacks a number of different ways, including limiting height, opacity and length and by increasing required fence setbacks. Most communities surveyed were as restrictive, if not more restrictive, than the village's current requirements. The 50% requirement can be easily met by some fences such as chain link, wrought iron and others. But it is not as easy for high-quality wood or vinyl picket fences to meet this requirement. A number of residents have found it difficult to meet the 50% opacity requirement. Fences are typically installed using eight-foot wide panels. The typical opacity of a picket fence ranges from 40 to 50%. Staff is proposing that the 50% requirement be reduced to 40% in order to accommodate more fence types while still promoting transparency.
Dave, maybe translate?
So, yeah, he has an example up here.
The fence type on the top is a wrought iron fence, you know, that one would have no problem. The majority of the picket fences that you would buy at Menards or Home Depot, they're pre-built eight-foot sections with the little Gothic-style pickets on them. If you measure them, they end up being about 52%, 53% closed, 48% open. So that's pretty much a standardized, you know, I went to Home Depot, Lowe's, Menards, and they're all right in that same range. It's just a hair shy. So rather than having the homeowner or fence installer rip all the pickets off and re-staple one less of them on in an eight-foot section. We're going, proposing to tweak the ordinance to allow 40% open instead of 50% open so that the standard picket fences that, you know, a lot of people have in their backyards already would then meet that code.
But we're talking about front yard ones, right? We're, we're talking about basically fences that
Yes.
above a street.
Yes. The only ones that are required to be semi-open would be located in front and corner side yards.
Correct.
Rear yard fences are always allowed to be solid fences.
And right now they're allowed to be four-foot tall if, and 50% open. We're suggesting four-foot tall and 40% open.
But other communities are as restrictive or more restrictive than us right now, as it stands.
Yeah, so this was one that we were also suggesting because we've gotten a lot of pushback. Personally, the majority of the ones that I've gotten pushback on are where a house is on a corner and the entrance is on the corner side of the house. And so they try to enclose the rear of the house and it ends up being in the front yard because of how the house is oriented.
But from the rear of the house back, even on a corner side yard, they, they can have a solid fence.
A three...
From the rear of the house to their rear property line or side property line.
It's, yeah, it's hard to...
Let me see if I can find a drawing here, hang on.
I mean, if...
The fence you were just showing there wasn't even 50% open.
No, there was, that was just an illustration in the...
Yeah, and that one was actually more, the top one was more than 50% open. The wrought iron and the bottom one was solid.
Right. Well, no, there was another picture he just had up there.
There was another one I found that was a picket fence that was, that was probably not...
It was not 50% open.
But if this is street and this is street and someone's lot is here and their house is here, they can have a solid fence from here back.
A four-foot solid fence?
A six-foot solid fence. This is the front going to the driveway.
So it depends what this house looks like.
Say it's a mirror.
So if it's a mirror, then yes, it would be able to come from this back corner. However, if that one is facing, if this is the front yard, then it would have to be setback, two-thirds of this setback.
Okay.
Got it now.
I'll try to explain some of the situation of a reverse order lot, which is what Claire is talking about. The rear yard here is adjacent to the front yard of the next door neighbor. So this guy, he has his house, he's facing out here to the front in, or the corner side and wants to put a fence to encapsulate his entire backyard all the way out to the right of the lawn. So because this is adjacent to a front yard, this guy would wanna see a six-foot tall fence all the way out to the edge of the street. So the requirement for that semi-open fence would be in this area here, right? So that is, so that would be the application where a rear yard-type utilization of it would be required to have a semi-open fence.
Gavin.
Similarly, so on the other corner lot there, what we would require is that the fence, if it is four-foot solid or taller, it would have to come out from the back corner of the house and enclose that way. If someone wanted to put it at the front corner of their house to enclose that front part, that section would have to be currently, right now, four-foot open fence. And it would still be that way, just the opacity would be slightly reduced.
What you're saying is the rest, if they want to put up a six-foot privacy fence, they could.
They could if they started
At the back corner of the house.
Either in the back corner of the house here because this one's in an adjacent rear lot, or they could step it in off the roadway. And if they step it in off the roadway, then they could have six foot all the way around.
I think you're saying, so it's really just to keep it as a courtesy to the neighbors and...
As a courtesy to the neighbors and also so you don't have, drive down the street and have just walls and fences the entire, like, you know, we wanna keep the, the six-foot tall fence.
There's a public safety aspect of it too, in terms of at the actual corner.
Yes, somebody, right. We always have sightline corners that we enforce. And then imagine if someone had a driveway here and we had a six-foot tall fence all the way out to the edge of the road, you know, we'd have sightline issues with that as well. So but all we're asking for tonight is a change in the definition of the semi-open going from a 50% open down to a 40% open, just to allow for some more flexibility with, you know, materials that are readily available.
These fences could be right up to the right-of-way, correct?
Yes. The semi-open ones can.
Honestly, I'm not a, a fan of making it less restrictive.
Quick question.
Yeah, Mr. Ray.
If the ones you were checking out at the stores were like somewhere around 48%, why do we go all the way down to 40?
Just to give a little bit of flexibility. You know, most of them that we found were right in the 45 to 48%. If we, if we lower it to 45%, it would still capture most of them. If it gives you a little more flex, if that gives you a little more comfort level.
So today are people just kind of, to be able to get to that 50%, or they just kind of jimmy rigging?
Some of them have pulled all the pickets off and replaced and basically renailed them back on. Basically, on an eight-foot length of fence, it comes with, I think, 13 pickets. So they pull them all off and staple 12 of them back on.
See, I just worry about people doing an end run like that and then it looks worse in the community.
They're, they're cussing the village the entire time.
Yeah, that, or they're choosing to install like a chain link fence or something where they're, where they prefer to do like a wood picket fence.
Or like one of the horrible situations in my neighborhood where someone put a posted rail fence up and then put that rectangular screening stuff behind it. It looks, it looks like, it looks terrible.
Yeah, I guess I'd rather have a picket fence with a little less spacing than a chain link fence.
It looks better for the community.
Personally, I...
Yeah, personally. Do you want a motion?
Any others discussion before we go to motion?
Would anybody like to up it a little bit? Would 45% be better? Still took in everything.
Nah.
I can't imagine somebody trying to build one with less because you didn't see ones with 40%, did you?
No. They were usually between 45, 48% if they were in that range.
If, if, if we were the outlier on this and, and as it relates to other communities, I'd be more receptive to it, but we're not the outlier. I think we're kinda right where mainstream is and, and honestly, I mean, a lot of people, when they get fences, they're, they're custom-made. And, and the custom-made fence people, they, they deal with it, so.
Well, even the, I've had fences installed and even when you're getting them from a fence company, they're not custom-making the panels. In a lot of cases, they're pre, they're pre-bought. So they might end up in the same situation, even buying from a fencing company and then end up having to spend more money if you had to have the spacing changed.
I just don't think it's that big of a change.
Should've gave us an example of a 50 and a 40. But that one, that one that you had up there was probably more like 40%.
That one was probably more like 30 to 35% open.
It was lower, yeah, it was lower even than 50. Do you have that again, so they...
Yes. Give me a second.
I mean, it's still fairly open, but it's, it's definitely way less than 50%. The spaces in between are about a, about two-thirds of the flat size. There it is. So yeah, that's, that's about 30%, isn't it?
I would guess that one would be about 30% open and let me...
They don't give this the open, they don't tell how open it is, do they?
If you click on it, it'll tell you the picket width and the space width typically.
So this one right here, which is a very typical fence that we've got around town. The picket widths are three and a half inches, the spaces are three and a quarter.
Got it, so it's less than 50?
No, it's just a hair less than 50% open. And I've seen that fence in, you know, probably 60 to 70, where people choose to put in the picket fences, that's, that seems to be a very common, popular style.
So a lot of the stuff is already up, is not conforming?
If it is in the rear yards, interior side yards, it would be allowed, only in the case where it's in a front yard or a corner side yard projected out adjacent to the right-of-way. So if it's in the backyard, it can be a six-foot solid. It's only in the cases where it's in those very specific locations that they are required to have the semi-open. And in that case, this fence would not meet it.
I'm surprised that if in a lot, a lot of the communities, including ours, that it's supposed to be 50% open, why they're not making them that way.
In all honesty, they may not look that closely. I don't know if they look that closely, I don't know.
Right, I guess not.
And the percentage of people with fences in their front yard is pretty small.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there are quite a few in the corner side where if they have a corner house where they're trying to enclose the corner yard.
And that's, and that's the situation I'm more concerned about, the public sa, safety aspect of it, so.
I think it's 47.5, how's that? Well, that picks up because that fence right there is still over 48.
Is that, okay.
It's 48.148148%.
Well, it definitely would allow a lot more fences that, that they couldn't use now.
So you're suggesting 47.5 instead of 40?
Well, how about 46 and then it'll be just a round number? That should cover everything. I mean, that fence doesn't look bad.
Now, this one would still be not allowed in the front yard or as a semi-open.
Why?
Because the size of the pickets are significantly greater than the size of the gaps.
But it would be with a 40.
It's an illustration, I would assume that the, my rough estimate is that the gaps are basically half the size of each of the pickets. So it's probably about a 30 to 35% open.
So that's greater o, o, it's more opaque than what we would...
Correct.
Correct.
There, there, yeah. That would not be allowed even at 40.
Yeah, I mean, my, my feeling here is that, you know, if we don't go with the staff recommendation of 40, I, I mean, we're going 46, 47.5, I don't feel comfortable with that. My suggestion would be if we wanted to do that, then we boot this meeting to another time and, and get specific examples so we feel comfortable in a yes or no. I'm comfortable voting on the 40, but if we start coming up with random percentages here, I, I don't feel comfortable with that.
The 40, there was no real magic with the 40. It was a nice round number that picked up all of the ones that we basically looked at that are basically the style.
My concern would be that we pick 47.5 and then we find out from staff six months from now that, oh, it should've been 45.5.
Now, there'll always be, if we pick 47.5, there'll always be a 47.25 come in.
Right.
If we pick a 40, there'll be a 39.5 come in.
So if that happens, we just deal with it. In my opinion, 40 is, is kind of extreme. Keep in mind, we're looking at examples here that are, if you're looking straight on at it. And keep in mind that we're thinking of a public safety issue here. When you're riding down the street, you're looking at these things at an angle as you're coming up to a corner. So the opacity is going to be perceived greater when, when you're coming up to a corner than if you're looking at it straight on.
Very true.
And this is so that they can see through to see traffic?
Traffic, pedestrians?
I thought it was just not to make a giant wall along the side of the street.
It's both, it's both, but you're... And it's not just cars coming down the street. I mean, in many cases, the, the, the public sidewalk is gonna be within what a foot of these sidewalks, or these fences, I mean. So, I mean, it's, it's...
And we, we do have site triangle language for driveways as well as for public streets. So I think it's a 15-foot site triangle for a driveway and a 25-foot site triangle for a public street. And, but we would allow, do we, do we allow semi-open in a site triangle? I think we may allow semi-open within a site triangle.
Yeah, and something, if you guys aren't comfortable with doing the 40, I understand, you could consider the 45 or ano, what other communities have done. I believe Grays Lake allows a 40% open, but it has to be setback. I believe Grayslake allows a forty percent open, but it has to be set back three feet from the front property line or corner side property line. So if you wanted to go a route like that or explore a route like that, that's also a possibility. There's a number of ways that communities have done this. I didn't provide a list of it just because they are so varying. Some allow fifty percent, some allow fifty percent up to twenty feet of length, and then they don't allow anything else like more than twenty feet in the front. Some, it's a percentage of the frontage length, so it's so varying what you'll see.
So when they raised the, the amount of opaque surface, they set it back further?
One or two communities did do that, where they would allow a forty. They would require that it be set back an additional, I believe it was three feet.
Right now, we don't have a setback for that.
No, it could be on the, it could be fifty percent open, four foot tall, and be on the property line.
Based on what you're hearing, Dave and Clara, what, what do you want us to do?
Sorry?
Where do you want to go with this? Do you want to take it back to the think tank and think about more, think about it more? Or you want us to pick an arbitrary number like forty-seven and a half? What do you want to do with it?
Could we go, you know, I... The forty, you know, the, the sample that I pulled up from the Home Depot website was forty-seven point two percent or some, or whatever, you know, that number was.
Forty-eight point one four.
Forty-eight point four. If we did forty-seven, I would be, that should encapsulate most of them. It's, it's just a little maddening to have something that is such a standard fence around our community not quite meet it and be so close. So if we could do the forty-seven percent, forty-seven and a half percent, I think we could live with that and that should take care of the vast majority of them.
Okay. Anybody willing to advance a motion? What do you want to do, forty-seven or forty-seven? I think we should allow a little bit of...
Forty-seven would be an easier number.
Forty-seven.
I'm not going to quibble, quibble over a half a percent.
Yeah, forty-seven.
So I'll make a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to the Village Board on the semi-open fence opacity text amendment as proposed by staff with the amendment of forty-seven versus fifty. Let's do that correctly?
I think so.
Forty-seven versus fifty.
Reducing the opacity from fifty to forty-seven percent. Reducing the opacity commitment from fifty to forty-seven percent. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bow.
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Gurney?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Antula?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next item, informal review on solar regulation.
Yes, so the Lake County Planning, Building and Development Department formed the Solar Energy Task Force to develop a solar energy model ordinance to serve as a template for participating local communities to use when adopting solar-specific zoning codes. Although the Village of Gurnee adopted solar-specific zoning codes in 2011, we participated in order to learn more about emerging solar trends and to hear about other communities' experience regarding solar. A draft ordinance was released in July of 2019, and staff just wants to get your opinion on the draft ordinance and some of the changes that were suggested. And of course, changes are not required for the Village of Gurnee's solar ordinance. It's, these are just suggestions that they came up with. So just to kind of run you through this, basically, regulations for rooftop solar did not change very much. The village allows solar on both, on both residential and non-residential rooftops. One change that was suggested is that, right now, the village defines solar, ground-mounted solar, as either small or large. They're suggesting doing small, medium, or large, and that's going to be based on the square foot, the square footage of the surface area. So that's one change, whereas right now, we have small defined as intended to primarily reduce onsite consumption of utility power, and large defined as used to produce energy to be sold commercially. And large systems are not allowed in the Village of Gurnee. And then we can get, I'm not sure if you want to discuss that or if you want me to go through all of this and then have a discussion at the end?
Whatever you think is most efficient.
Okay. I, so I'll just run through this and then if you guys have questions. So that's one change. I would say the biggest change is that the model ordinance suggests allowing ground-mounted solar energy systems as principal uses, either by right or by special use, depending on the district and size of the system. If you go to page four of the notes, you can see that. And then also for these ground-mounted systems, the model ordinance allows accessory use ground-mounted in residential districts as long as they are the small and medium or large by conditional or special use in our case. So if you look at this, right now, we allow rooftop on all roofs, and anything ground-mounted would require a special use. So that's a pretty big change. We don't have any language allowing ground-mounted systems as a principal use. And then I would say the other big part is suggesting requirements for decommissioning and abandonment of solar energy systems. However, the village feels this can be accomplished through the property maintenance code and code enforcement, so there is a large section of that in the model ordinance that you may have seen. And then there are some additional provisions related to exceptions, lighting, signage, and native plantings, which are found in the model ordinance. And we have seen a large increase in the number of rooftop solar permits. However, no special use permits for ground-mounted solar systems have been applied for at this time.
I'm, I'm curious, I mean, how many rooftop systems do we currently have?
So thirty-seven were applied for in 2018 and 2019, and prior to that, only one was applied for in 2016.
This is businesses, homes?
Both. I think only two of the thirty-seven were businesses. I think it was Target and Home Depot.
You'd never know it, but they've got roof-mounted solar on them right now.
Yeah, you wouldn't see it.
Pardon? I didn't catch the beginning of your statement.
You said you would never know it, but they, both Home Depot and Target have roof-mounted solar on them right now.
Okay.
It's good to get ahead of this. I had a, it's funny, just as I was kind of reading this before the meeting on Saturday or Sunday, I get an email from ComEd, and you click on it, put your address in, and it shows you exactly where you can put the solar power on your home based on Google Maps. So I would anticipate we're going to have more people looking to do this, and they're just going to bring in whatever Google tells them.
There are companies that are actively citing them and engaging property owners in town right now with different lease options, purchase options, installation options. They're identifying high, high-profitable locations and really doing a big, a big sell on it. There's some good incentives through the state right now to help in the installation costs. And like Clara said, we've seen thirty-seven of them in the last year, where prior to that, we'd seen one.
As, as you guys go through, you guys being staff, go through the technical details of what the county has done or is proposing, do you see any reason for us to change anything?
The utility scale ones are probably the biggest difference from where the county is moving versus where we are. The only thing I have to add to what Clara said, I know that Woodland School District is looking to install ground-mounted solar arrays at all of their facilities. The elementary primary buildings is unincorporated Lake County. The middle school, where they're planning on doing it, is over by the ball fields, which is actually unincorporated. They're also looking at doing one at the intermediate school, so that one would require a special use permit. They have not applied for that yet, but they have had some initial discussions with me about that. The land area that would be required to do a utility scale solar array, we don't have that many large parcels of land that would be well-suited for it. It may be able to be used in like, over a wetland, or there may be some applications like that for lands that aren't otherwise able to be developed. That would probably be the highest likelihood of where we would see something like that come into town. And I don't believe that stormwater management has quite figured out how to regulate these on wetland floodplain. You know, there's some, you know, while all the water still runs down, it's, it's got a little bit different characteristics with a water runoff than would a, you know, just a naturalized wetland or something like that. So that's something they are looking at as well. But that would probably be the only locations that I would really see. You know, it, it's not going to be as valuable as an industrial structure, you know, if, if, but if somebody has it, you know. It, it's, I don't think we have a huge exposure for the large-scale developments here in town. Long story short.
And, and, and just to summarize, I mean, right now, anything ground-mounted would have to go through the special use process.
Correct.
From my perspective, I don't think there's enough data out there for us to be able to come up with an informed opinion on how to craft something that would include by right. Because, I mean, there's just not, is, is there enough data out there in other communities and...
Well, that's what the goal of this task force was. And the only ones that they're permitting by right, ground-mounted-wise, is in, is for small scale, so that's going to be what they're suggesting as a system that occupies 1,750 square feet of surface area or less. So that would be allowed by right in residential lots, commercial, industrial, and institutional. And then they're suggesting that a medium scale, which would be that amount up to forty thousand square feet, be permitted in commercial, industrial, or institutional, but would be considered a special use in any residential.
I'm, I'm just not seeing, I'm not hearing a compelling reason to take, take that one off of the all-special-use permit situation right now.
I concur. I mean, truthfully, I, I'd just like to see ground prohibited because it's just, there's no basis for it, there's no reason for it.
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you raise it up high enough to park underneath it, like at a school or something like that, is that still ground-mounted?
Yes. Unless you build a, some kind of a parking structure and...
Put it on the roof?
Mounted on the roof of that, it would be allowed on an accessory structure, but it, it...
They're doing that, they're doing that in California a lot at the schools. They're putting carport covers, basically, but they're just solar panels. I mean, I guess you build a, a carport and then put the solar panel on the roof, it's, it's really no different.
Correct.
Got to build a structure to hold it up anyway.
Right.
Okay.
So this was just kind of an informal update, there's no action?
No.
No, we were just looking for feedback.
I, personally, I don't see any reason to change anything. Anybody else?
So they're looking at changing this to by right, you can put small ones on the ground?
Small, yes. By right in any district is what they're suggesting with their model ordinance update.
And medium and large in industrial or commercial? Industrial would be permitted by, in any, as a principal use? Am I reading that right?
Well, I think I heard Brian say he doesn't see any reason to change anything right now.
We can...
I think we should change it and prohibit ground completely.
As of right now, they're evaluated on a site-by-site basis as a special use permit. We have not had any come through the process yet. I expect the school will, the intermediate school, the hunt club, so that will be a, a good test case for yourselves to see how it looks cited on the property and then for the Village Board to make the ultimate decision.
Dave?
Yeah, I, I'm okay with leaving it as a special use. I mean, I don't expect that we'll be absolutely crushed and inundated with the process. It'll be a handful. And, I mean, I don't know where it falls in, whether we can restrict or make it so that we, it's not permitted, period. You know, like, there was something else that we, that we, we weren't allowed to ban.
There, yeah, there are some protected uses, adult uses, or, you know, prohibition of freedom of speech, things like that.
And there's the old cell tower issue.
I don't know if we have that same concern with solar energy.
I mean, we just restrict it so much that it's just impractical to be able to cite it on any kind of a, you know, residential lot or anything like that. I'd rather, I'd rather have the ability to, to have the review process and have some, some different sets of eyes on it rather than letting it be permitted.
But some people may have a big enough piece of property where they could do it without it being in somebody else's sight vision, but...
That's, that's the whole beauty of the special use process.
Right, exactly.
Because we, we take each individual circumstance and, and we, we look at it as an individual circumstance.
I'm good with special use.
Okay.
So we will just hold it as it is.
Okay. All right, um, next meeting is scheduled for September four. Are we going to have a meeting?
Um, I don't know that we have any special use or any public hearings right now, but it's possible.
Did the Village Board remand the car wash back to us?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the car wash is going to be September fourth, or, September fourth. The car wash will be September fourth. It was remanded back because they made changes to it.
Which one is this?
The, the one in East Grand on Lawrence and Grand.
The one that's going for, that wants to be just a car wash and not a gas station?
Right, right.
Yeah, it was...
What happened to the one on twenty-one? Where'd that go?
They pulled back. They didn't want to do it anymore. You're talking about the one by Stevens?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, they don't want to, they don't want to put it there anymore.
withdrew their application.
Yes.
So we will then have something on?
Yes, we will. I'm sorry, I was thinking of the noticing, and I haven't done noticing.
Because that would just be a continuation of the public hearing.
Exactly, yeah, that one is remanded back, so...
Okay.
You guys will be able to review it with the changes that they've made.
Okay, and... That's the one that came, you weren't here for that man, it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, recently.
Yeah, they, they made some changes after it was here, and the Planning Division recommended to the Village Board that they remanded it back to us because the changes were substantial.
Did the Village Board recommend the changes?
No, no, they remanded it back.
Probably before they even got there.
They didn't even want to look at it until we looked at it again because of the changes were so substantial.
Yeah, because there were some non-favorable recommendations, so they wanted the Planning and Zoning Board to review it.
Got it.
Okay. Okay. There's nobody here, so no public comment, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.